And think of us, and plus, all of the ones that work at the schools, and the parents, and everybody else. This, it takes everyone to look after our kids and, you know, what's best for them. So, if you would, please.
Carol, I'll let you, if you would, listen to our pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Very good, everyone, please be seated. Moving into our first action tonight for the board members is, should we excuse Tommy now, John, or after the minutes? Does it really matter?
Now, if you approve.
Okay. This time, board members, if we have a member that's not here, we do go through the process to excuse that member, so I entertain a motion, we excuse Mr. Cave.
So moved.
And do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor, someone say an aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved, very good. Next is the approval of minutes. Renee had sent out, all the board members had a chance to review the minutes from our March 28th meeting. Are there any questions, changes, revisions? Have a motion that we approve, do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor, someone say an aye.
Aye.
Very good.
We're already missing.
I know.
Next is the adoption of the agenda. Board members, there are two, we need to add, a couple of changes, I'll go over those quickly and see if there's anything else. Under informational items, I think Renee did send out, there is an additional request from Early College for a trip to Dollywood. And I'm sure Tim can, he'll pull that up for us on that particular one, since it's added. You have that one, don't you, Tim, or no? Okay. We'll talk about it, I think it's just the standards, I think they go every year. And then, under fundraising requests, we have two additional fundraising requests for Macon Middle School, that we will come up and we'll talk more about that also. And in addition to the basketball games and concessions, there's two other requests. Any other changes?
Dr. Baldwin, Mr. John, Renee.
Yes.
All right, with those changes, at this time, I would entertain a motion, we adopt the agenda with those two revisions. Do I get a motion?
Some.
And a second.
Second.
All in favor, someone say an aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved, very good. Recognition. At this time, I'm going to use the recognition, and our presentation, I turn it over to Dr. Baldwin, so, Dr. Baldwin, if you would, please.
Yes.
From Mr. Gibbs.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As a county athletic director, and on behalf of the Board of Education, and Dr. Baldwin, Mr. King, you come on up, please. We'd, and Mr. No, if you could come on up also, please. We'd like to recognize Mr. King for his being voted by the North Carolina High School Athletic Association as their 2021 Special Person of the Year Award for Region Eight. Just a little bit about this award. The award goes to a person with at least 10 years of experience in education athletics, who is still active in the field, has regularly gone above and beyond the call of duty at both the local and the state level. The Special Person Award may go to a contributor to the NCHSA who is directly in coaching, or education, or outside of coaching and education. They recognize, as you can see, the picture up here is Q Tucker, who is the chairman, the commissioner, I'm sorry, the North Carolina High School Athletic Association, presenting to Mr. King the Special Person of the Year Award. And I'd just like to get a little bio on Mr. King. He served as a coach, a teacher, a school health director, vice principal, and athletic director in Tennessee and North Carolina since 2006. He's got his master's from Tennessee Tech, and a specialist, education specialist degree from Lincoln Memorial University. He started several programs as a school health director that garnered national and state attention. Save Kids Here Award, Save Kids Partner of the Year Award, Governor's Council Shining Star Award, General Mills Champion for Health Kids, Ambassador of Goodwill, being awarded the Healthy Living Innovation Award by the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services, and the Best Example Project Award from the Rural Health Association. As athletic director, Mr. King was awarded the North Carolina Soccer Coaches Association Administrator Athletic Director of the Year Award in 2019. He currently serves as the Assistant Principal for Mr. Noah Franklin High School, and he gave up his AD position to be with his family, spend time with his kids, who are playing sports. Mr. King, we appreciate what you do, we appreciate what you did, and we appreciate what you still do in terms of athletics and for our kids at Franklin High School. Thank you. Did you know, if you could speak some words, working with Mr. King?
I'd love to, I've got tons of things I'd love to say about this young man. He's a wonderful person, not only to work with, but he covers ballgames, force, anything that needs to be done around campus, he's the first one to jump in and do it. Except for the last couple of days, he's had surgery, so he's, he's still getting along. Also, today at Franklin High School, he was voted Support Person of the Year for our whole staff, so that just goes to show you how much our teachers care about him, and how much he's appreciated on this campus. So, Mr. King is just one of those guys to where they would never tell you what a good job he does, that's why I'm here, so I can speak for him, because he's too humble and too proud to say things like that about himself, but he's an amazing young man, and we're blessed to have him at Franklin High School. So, thank you guys for listening to the program, this man is, the award is well deserved.
Yes.
Pleasure working with him.
Okay, yeah, I think we have, we'll pause for a second, I think we have some, some of our young people and students coming in. We're excited. Let's try this a little solemn here.
They keep coming.
Link across, Maggie would need to.
Well, good evening, Dr. Baldwin, friends of the school board, and Chairman Bree Love, audience members. It is, I wrote everything down, so I wouldn't ramble, but it is with so much grateful appreciation that I'm here tonight. There's a lot of excitement among parents and community members right now about the direction we're seeing in our school system in regards to opportunities in the arts. And I want to thank you for that, from the bottom of my heart. Over the past year, fine art schedules at two elementary schools have finally enabled students to have art and music both year-round, and the addition of an additional full-time art and music position has enabled students at South Macon and Isle Valley Elementarys to have more music, music more frequently than once a week. I am proud to say that all preschoolers in Macon County schools now have music at least once a week. While we know that these positions are contingent on SRF funding that expires in 2024, we are certainly grateful to you for them, and the value that they bring to our students. I want to thank you personally, being one of these new hires, and share with you some of the results that I have personally seen in the classroom. Last year this time, we were embarking on the summer learning program, and you contracted with Maggie's Music Academy, among other businesses in the area, to serve these students. My colleagues and I watched pandemic torn first through fourth graders lacking confidence and social skills become children again, and find the joys of making music together, and just of being kids together. We had taught almost 100 of them how to make melodies on piano keyboards independently, and taught them the fun of playing ukuleles. We finished up the summer strong, singing songs together that required teamwork and listening skills, and they ate it up, and quickly guzzled down everything we threw at them. They asked for more. At the end of the summer, I was approached by Ms. Bell with the news that you were able to add a full-time art and music in elementary, and she asked me to come on board and take the new music position. Thank you. I have been honored to serve the South Macon community this school year, and together with Allison Gwynn, oh, she's here somewhere, thank you, we have ministered to the social and emotional needs of all students at South Macon Elementary through group music, and I'm proud to share with you that we are seeing encouraging progress in this area. The learning loss that we've seen in music has been profound, just like all the other subject areas, and we're working hard to get kids where they need to be to feel successful and confident. By the end of fourth grade, students should be able to make music independently, and to function independently within an ensemble class, and/or on their own instrument. Their elementary music experience should give them the confidence and simple know-how, along with great making memories, making music alone and with others. Every student should arrive in middle grades with the basic skills and confidence to participate in ensembles. At South Macon, music curriculum has been focused on teaching students to internalize steady beat, something that's been seriously lacking, probably due to the pandemic. It's super important for literacy, even gross motor, gross motor skills. We have been allowed, we have been using our newfound steady beat to put music together, and that's been an amazing experience. This seems to have opened up a whole new world for them. Additional work that's being done, the elementary music teachers are now meeting quarterly to discuss long-term planning, standards-based teaching, and assessment in student growth within the music classroom. We have scheduled a meeting with all music teachers across the county for late May to discuss vertical planning, and how we can best feed the middle and upper-level band and chorus programs in Macon County schools. Which brings me to what you see before you this evening. This is the South Macon Elementary School Chorus, made up of third and fourth graders. This group was formed in late February, aftermath became optional, and we received the green light to sing again. They have had exactly six after-school rehearsals, the last two of which were separated by a two-week time span that included spring break. That's my disclaimer. In those six rehearsals, though, I can only tell you how hard these kids have worked, and how amazingly they have stepped up to the plate, and how they brag on, "Today's chorus day, today's chorus day," and won't leave me alone about it. In just six practices, they have stepped up to learn discipline and teamwork, not to mention the basic skills that it makes to make, it takes to make a good sound together. They make me so proud. If you observe nothing else from our presence here tonight, I hope that you will see how excited they are to be here, and to share their talent with you. I don't know how many there are, but I'm pretty sure we're really close to 100% tonight, which says a lot. I also want to brag on their parents, who volunteered their time, money, and energy to provide our T-shirts, and who are constantly asking how they can help. School board, I can't tell you how blessed we are to have such wonderful, supportive parents, and how dedicated they are to providing this opportunity for their children. Lastly, before we sing, I wanted to challenge you to make sure that each one of my chorus babies, including my own son, nothing like embarrassing him, has the opportunity to continue singing together throughout their school career. In January, I had the pleasure of partnering with MMS Leadership to write a grant to Chorus America, asking for $40,000 to equip a new choral classroom at Macon Middle School with state-of-the-art equipment, and this was in partnership, and in the, in partnership with Macon County Youth and Children's Choir. I received word over spring break that our grant has made it to the final round of this national competition, that we are very likely to receive a portion at least, if not all of that request. So please support Macon Middle School leadership to ensure that this is provided next year, and full-time in the years following, and scheduled in a way to provide equal access to all. I would love to receive word one day that my former chorus babies have been accepted into the North Carolina Honors Chorus, or are receiving superiors representing Franklin High School in state adjudication events. Our babies will need this as stress relief, as they navigate the complexities of academics, adolescence, and self-discipline. And Macon County citizens will appreciate it as we send off self-disciplined, considerate, and well-rounded graduates into the workforce. I'd like to invite you to our, I would say our spring concert, but somehow, we managed to schedule it on top of the next school board meeting, sorry, but we will be singing at the Academic Foundation event at the beginning of May. So without further ado, thank you for this opportunity to be the music teacher of these future young leaders in front of you, and thank you for your time tonight. Stand over here, and I will be in the way. Everybody sing. One bottle pop, two bottle pop, three bottle pop, four bottle pop, five bottle pop, six bottle pop, seven bottle pop, 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 pop. Don't throw your trash in my backyard, my backyard, my backyard. Don't throw your trash in my backyard, my backyard's full. Fish and chips and vinegar, vinegar, vinegar. Fish and chips and vinegar, 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 salt, salt. One bottle pop, two bottle pop, three bottle pop, four bottle pop, five bottle pop, six bottle pop, seven bottle pop, 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 pop. Don't throw your trash in my backyard, my backyard, my backyard. Don't throw your trash in my backyard, my backyard's full. Fish and chips and vinegar, vinegar, vinegar. Fish and chips and vinegar, 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 salt, salt. One bottle pop, two bottle pop, three bottle pop, four bottle pop, five bottle pop, six bottle pop, seven bottle pop, 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 pop. Don't throw your trash in my backyard, my backyard, my backyard. Don't throw your trash in my backyard, my backyard's full. Fish and chips and vinegar, vinegar, vinegar. Fish and chips and vinegar, 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 salt, salt. One bottle pop, two bottle pop, three bottle pop, four bottle pop, five bottle pop, six bottle pop, seven bottle pop, 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 pop. Don't throw your trash in my backyard, my backyard, my backyard. Don't throw your trash in my backyard, my backyard's full. Fish and chips and vinegar, vinegar, vinegar. Fish and chips and vinegar, 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 salt, salt. So that's obviously our warm-up. Can that work, like serious song? There we go. Watch me. Oh, music, sweet music, thy praises we will sing. We will tell of thy pleasures and happiness you bring. Music, music, let thy praises ring. Oh, music, sweet music, thy praises we will sing. We will tell of thy pleasures and happiness you bring. Music, music, let thy praises ring. This is the test to see who's really watching. Thank you, school board.
Oh, you guys, all right, let's start here, your names, I want to hear who, who, form side, I'm sorry.
Jasper.
Last name?
Jasper.
Next.
Brandon.
Chris.
Gabriel.
Randy.
Martin.
Daisy Parker.
Kathleen.
Alexis.
Colga.
Bryce.
Corbin.
Billy.
Madison.
Julian.
Karen.
Jackson Oberly.
Alexandra.
Jessica.
Dennis.
Emily.
Heather.
Kayla.
Alicia.
Amy.
Dana.
Cameron.
Alex.
Jeremiah.
Alyssa Webb.
Addison.
Peyton.
Brittany.
Bradley Johnson.
Natalie.
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 Russell.
Brucey.
I recognize a lot of names. Great. Thank you all so much, we don't often get live performances, but that was worth waiting for, so, thank you very, very much. And by the way, you have a lot of proud parents here, I look out, I want to see a smile going on, so that was, that made it all worthwhile, so.
Am I allowed to come up here?
Say what?
Am I allowed to be right here?
Sure can.
That was Christian Dawson's baby sister.
Oh, okay.
I swear, I didn't even know I was pregnant.
Yeah, to the best of their, seeing this way of work.
Those are precious.
They were so good.
They were good.
She's looking to me and trying to pay attention. Next one, Jen, the face coverage, Dr. Baldwin.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, this is the board. We've had a really good month in terms of our COVID numbers, we've actually had no staff who've tested positive since our last board meeting, and we've had only six students test positive over that same timeframe, and I'm very happy to report that as of about 3:00 this afternoon, it may have changed since 3:00, but as of 3:00, we had zero staff quarantined or positive, and zero students staffed or quarantined. So, it's been a really good month, and it's been a really good day, I know I feel a lot safer with all those kids singing, knowing that we have no positive cases.
Are you sensitive, venture there? And you know, I figure that we do have to take a vote, as required by this legislature, in terms of continuing mask optional or mask required, so, I will entertain a motion at this time.
I'd like to make a motion that we continue with mask optional.
And a second.
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor, motion, someone say an aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved, thank you, everybody, it really is good news. I did not see any names on public comments, so I think we are moving forward. Informational items, board members, overnight, our district trip requests, we've all had a chance to look at those, I think we do have some of the principles here, if there are any questions, I don't really think so, looks there, so, are there any questions of any of the requests? At this time, and remember, did have one to Macon Early College, but it was Dollywood, Renegu, and what day it was, I'm sorry, I lost that.
May 20th.
May 20th. Any questions, board members? And I entertain a motion, then, that we approve all of the trip request as presented.
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion, second, any other discussion? All in favor, someone say an aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. That's great, I'm glad we're in a stage where we can do those things, because it is an important part of education, for children to be able to do those. Fundraising request, Franklin High School, if you would, Tim, put that up, and what we'll do is, we'll ask, have the, if Mr. No is here, does anyone have any questions of Mr. No on this request? Good. Isle Valley Elementary School, here in its state, T-shirts. Ms. Bell is here, does anyone have any questions on this one? Here now, next is Macon Middle School, the faculty-student basketball games and concessions. And I think this is in connection with.
Yes, this is, this is in connection with a non-school-sponsored trip, Mr. Chairman.
Correct. And I think the ones we added are, all, all, also in connection with the Europe trip, or no? Because we had the one, if you remember, Fat Buddies, I think the one we had was, we did have one for about the soccer camp, that was for to benefit the soccer, Macon Middle School soccer, and then the talent show was also a fundraiser for the Europe trip, I believe, is that right? Any, any questions? Somebody say a note, at this time, I entertain a motion, that we approve the fundraising request as presented.
So moved.
Have a motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
Let me ask the second, there you go, we do miss time, you have a discussion. All in favor, someone say an aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Brooke, you're a locally academically or intellectually gifted plan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, in your package, you should have, I think it's 11 pages, but it's just sort of a version of this plan, this is a plan that we have to go through every three years, and I just want to recognize that we have had a great local committee that has worked on this, Katie Huskison has worked on this, Deanna Bakoo, Kaylee Seidey, Jennifer Love, they've worked really hard and had a lot of valuable input in, in dragging this, so.
So moved.
Sarah Shook, excuse me, yes, they've all had a lot of really good input into this plan. So, our vision is that we would be able to give all students who are gifted with the right to an education proportionate with their learning, with their learning abilities. So gifted children, they perform at substantially higher levels of accomplishment compared to their peers, so we want to believe, we want to make sure that we give these students the opportunities to, to grow and to receive enrichment. And there's been a concerted effort to make sure that all children, regardless of their socioeconomic background or cultural background, are a part of this process, we've made sure that we've, we've looked through our identification process, we've made sure that we're not disproportionately identifying students who are, you know, who have a white background, we're making sure that we're using some nonverbal measures and some things to just cast a broader net and look more frequently for students in this program. I wanted to bring your attention a little bit to funding, because that, that really drives what we're doing. We're automatically funded at 4%, so we have to identify at least 4% of our student population, and if we identify less than that, the state is happy to give us less funding, but at least 4% and we're good. So we.
We're actually about 500,000%.
We're at 5.4% with our latest head count that we just did for AIG, and we have, we've used some new measures that this team has come up with, and we have been casting a broader net, and we're seeing more representation in English language learners, so that's a good thing. So we're funded at the 4%, and I wanted to just make sure that you all knew that currently, we have three teachers that are funded out of this. We have two teachers at MBI, and all of their salary comes out of this, they're AIG teachers who serve cluster group students who, who are identified as academically or intellectually gifted, so that's, that's one of the research, or best practices for serving those kids, so they're funded out of this, the entirety of their salary, two of them, and a half of a position that is Deanna Bakoo's at the high school, she teaches AP Math. So there was, in looking at this plan, there were a lot of ideas kicked back and forth about hiring a lot of different specialists, however, when we get down to brass tacks, we want to make sure that we keep everybody in a position, and that we don't bite off more than we can chew, so we have $70,000 to play with. So we have $70,000 to play with. There were, there were no other allotments or ways that we could move these teachers off. And really, we want to make sure that we maintain these lower class ratios because we can do a good job and differentiate for our students if we don't take teachers out of the classroom. So we were very purposeful about not doing that with this plan. So that left $70,000 to do something differently with. I spoke to Mr. Lynch and we are proposing funding two specialists, one to serve the kindergarten through sixth grade age and one to serve the seventh through 12th grade age. And they would also be serving as a school administrator. So we would, we would have funding out of another pool as well.
Would they service Highlands and Nantahala also?
Yes, ma'am. And based on some preliminary data, we do have one that's going to be identified in Nantahala. We've got some more things to come in, but I was excited to see that. And we do have that as well. We, we're going to be very purposeful about assigning schools to make sure that we have. And when I get to another standard, I'm going to talk a little bit about making sure that we're building our human resource capital. So on our, I don't know if you've been having any questions about the funding. I just wanted to bring that up first. Yes, sir.
So you're talking about adding one position or two?
Two.
Okay, and you suspect your funding will be able to sustain that ongoing? Or will down the road, you're expecting to come back and ask for additional funding from other sources?
Well, the, the only reason I can make two positions work is because through, I believe it's at-risk funding, we're going to be able to fund two assistant principals half out of our pod of AIG that can serve. They would also have to have their AIG credentials as well. You know, to be able to serve in that capacity and to serve as a school administrator. Were there any other questions around the funding? But it would be sustainable, yes, sir. We want to make sure that we didn't put anybody out of the classroom. So I know it's not a lot to work with, but this is where we're at.
Figures crossed, always the same. Most dependent upon state funding of course. Correct. I guess it actually phrases better with the funding, so it's always contingent on that.
Well, with standard one, Dr. Baldwin, we are casting a broader net. If you look at your Cliffs Notes version, you know, we're, we're giving multiple means of identification. We're, we're doing a universal screener at third grade that we're really looking at kind of that intellectual component that may not show up like in, in grades. You know, kids that are divergent thinkers who are able to creatively solve problems. So we just had a mass screening with the COBAT test and we worked with our school psychologists to identify that. And we had a lot of students, you know, that, you know, kind of raised some of our flags to look at in other domains. We're going to look at their grades, we're going to look at their EOG scores, we're going to look at a lot of other factors. Jennifer had presented a few times back, the identification matrix, where there's just all sorts of little areas that students could show their giftedness. So the purpose around our standard one student identification, we're casting a broader net. Third grade, we have the mass screening, but also in K2, we're looking at those students. If there's students who are consistently performing above two grade levels in their current grade, they're going to, they're going to be honed in on by the AIG specialist to come up with a differentiated education plan. So K2, we have a referral screening process that principals are aware of and we will continue to make sure that we're educating staff so they know if you've got a kid who is performing and is a little, a little far, you know, right of center and, you know, normal differentiation's not working, then we can bring on some more people to help. Our second standard that we address is comprehensive programming within a total school community. And there are multiple opportunities that we have to meet these students' needs. We're going to use cluster grouping, so those children that we do have identified as being gifted, going to make sure that we put at least two or three of them together into a classroom at fourth grade to make sure that they have intellectual peers with them because that is considered best practice when it comes to students who are gifted. Content acceleration, so those students who are really outpacing where they need to be, we can look at it single subject, if you're gifted in math, maybe you need to accelerate to the next grade level. And, you know, we can work within those parameters. Some kids might need to skip a whole grade level. That's a little more rare, but those things can happen. Pull-out enrichment is going to happen for the K4 students quarterly. We offer online courses, dual enrollment, honors, advanced placement, summer enrichment, things like Governor's School. Those are also ways that we're just enhancing and meeting some needs. Also with that other principal position, we plan on focusing one at the middle school, high school level so they can be very purposeful in advising those students in what classes to take. These students are automatically eligible to be able to dual enroll early, you know, in some college classes. If they're gifted in both math and reading, they can go ahead and start dual enrollment classes earlier than their junior year. So just making sure that they're taking advantage of those opportunities and being purposeful about grouping that, those groups of students together and helping them get it done. Because much in the same way that, you know, any kid needs that help, sometimes you need a little bit of a push and it helps to get that group together. The third standard is differentiated instruction for students. Every AIG student will have a differentiated education plan. And that will list out how are we going to meet that kid's needs? And that might be through curriculum compacting, accelerating them depending on how they're performing, what they're looking like. And you look at them every year and you discuss it with their parents to see, you know, is this kid two or three grade levels above where they need to be? Well, let's get them, let's get them in the appropriate content so they're not bored to tears. And also accommodations and modifications to meet their needs. Standard four, personnel and professional development. This is something that we talked about a pretty good bit. One thing that the AIG folks at DPI want to do is make sure that we do have teachers who are highly qualified and just, they're just informed of the nature of a gifted student and are able to differentiate for them, know some of the, sometimes there is asynchronous development. Sometimes a kid may be doing really well academically, but maybe, but maybe socially and emotionally they might not be on par with where they are academically. So there's just a lot of, just content that we want to make sure that teachers are aware of. Some school systems have developed a local credential, but we've talked back about that. We really want to make sure that we can incentivize our teacher to give them something more than like a local badge or say, just for Macon County Schools, we think you're qualified to work with an AIG student. So as an option, we want to give teachers the opportunity to participate in just local PD for gifted students. We're going to work in tandem with the AIG specialists who have been serving students in the classroom to develop course content that will enable them to sit for their licensure exam, so you can add it on. I've recently participated in that myself and added AIG on in my licensure. So we want to be able to pay those teachers so once they went through the PD, you pay $130, you take a test online, if you pass it, you can add it for $60 onto your licensure. So we want to take care of that and then also give them a little monetary incentive for adding that to their licensure and going through that. And I plan on working a little further with Josh and Angie just to decide the specifics of what that incentive will be. Because that will just cast a broader net and then, you know, teachers will feel a little better first with serving those students in their classrooms. And then the last, or my last standard, excuse me, standard five is partnerships. Parents and guardians, they're involved with the development of these DEPs every year. Community partners are very important in involving them in presentations, real learning, involving them in the enrichment in the community, going out and partaking in some of the activities. And STEM is a really nice marriage when it comes to enrichment and being able to expose our students to robotics or where they could go in their career. So those are, those are nice hooks and nice things that Ms. Love has set up in her program that we can take advantage of as well. And then the last part is program accountability, like how are we going to measure that we're making a difference? And we're going to look at these, EVOS growth of our students, students' performance on formative and summative assessments, their participation. We're going to have student portfolios that we gather. Demographic data, are we coming along when it comes to identifying subgroups that are disproportionately under identified? Long-term student outcomes and just surveys regarding teacher, student, and parent satisfaction. So those are some of the ways that we plan to data capture. And I just want to say that all of our teachers are highly qualified. All of our teachers went to school, they know pedagogy. This is, this is simply an offshoot of that. And I, I think, I think it's great anytime that we can just increase our awareness and our ability to, to serve a group of students confidently, why not do it? And so I think, for me, it was very attractive just to, I don't want to earn a local badge, I want it to be on my license, I want to be card carrying. And I think, you know, with being able to get paid back for that and then being able to offer teachers an incentive for going through that, that we will be able to cast a broader net. We've already had a few folks in the district before even offering them any incentive, just saying we pay them back, have already went ahead and passed and done that on their own. So I'm excited to see who else we can hook. And that was the end of my presentation unless there's any questions around.
Questions? Do we need to approve this answer or is it just informational purposes?
Need to be approved.
That's what I thought, just to make sure. I jumped in, go from there, so. All right, last chance, any questions? Brooke, did I just call you Angie?
Yeah.
I was wondering why you were asking Angie?
I don't know. Been a long day.
It's the heat.
I guess I did recognize you, so I'm proud of myself.
Because I'm really good with money.
All right, we have the gifted plan which is in at this point, I would entertain a motion of the questions that we approve. Do I hear a motion?
I accept the motion. And I'd like to also say, Mr. Chairman, they have worked very hard on this AIG plan. This is a total commitment and this, this is exemplary. And I've been doing this 40 years. This is exemplary, so I would like to make a motion.
Will be approved. Well said. And have a second. Any other discussion?
Good job.
Exactly, all in favor, say my saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved, you don't have to do this here for three years, is that right?
See you in 2025.
Mr. Gibbs, teacher assistant to teacher, MOU.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, if you remember last month, we asked you guys to approve the MOU of the teacher sits and the teacher program with Western Carolina University. With E, this state requires with this program that each university that we have an employee working with, we have an MOU. And this MOU here on the board is with East Carolina University. We've had a lot of success with teachers coming in without teaching license, working through East Carolina University. So we thought that we would partner with them through this MOU for the teacher assistant to teacher program. The difference with Western Carolina and ECU's program is that Western Carolina has face-to-face classes that teacher assistants will have to sit down in the classroom and take. East Carolina's program is, for the most part, online, but there are five or six weekends where they'll have to go to ECU to meet people. So it's just a little bit different program. And we're hoping that you guys will approve this ECU MOU for teacher assistant to teacher program.
So we also have one with Western.
Would you have one with Western? But the state requires each university that you have, that we have an MOU.
Make sure I had my stuff up there.
What did they set up, Mr. Chairman? I mean, they could have supplied this amount of funding to the, our employees, the TAs, who would then pay it forward into the program and pay their own tuition way into it. But the way it works is a reimbursement, we have to, we get, we draw down the funds and pay it to the college. So it's got to be a way, this is like a feedback that says, you'll let us know who else enrolled and if they stay enrolled and we provide the funds when they're received.
You have reviewed this, correct, John? Okay. Questions, board members? Entertain a motion?
So moved.
A motion that we approve. The MOU is presented, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second. All in favor, say my saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Bill, Grant, correct on the business of finance. Now, Angie, or should I call you Brooke? If you'll answer the one then, right? Okay.
Okay, we have several, so the first one is the state.
Let's just go through all of the budget amendments, we'll cover them all and we'll approve them in bulk, Angie, that's all right.
State amendments, we are adding $1,938,269.47 to the state allotment. The bulk of that is PRC 141, which was our state fiscal recovery bonus that the state allocated for any permanent employee. They received $1,000 and it was $500 extra if their salary was less than $75,000. And that was paid back in January. So that's the allocation of the, and that was $1,155,000. The other main component of that is PRC 45, which was also a bonus. And that was the $300 bonus that was for all state-funded teachers. And that is a total of $98,877.65. There is an additional PRC 71 in there, $414,765. And that was the bonus, that was the supplement that is based on the median tax, the tax rate, the median household income and the effective tax rate, well, those three things. Effective tax rate, median household income and.
Property value.
Property value, yes, thank you. So that was the one that was paid out in February of $1,012 for each state-funded teacher.
And that is expected to be recurring?
That is recurring, the amounts will change because it will depend on what those values are, those three criteria, at the time that the bonus is issued, the allotment.
So that's going to change.
It could change every year.
Depending on property.
Yeah.
And so the property values go up, the bonus will go up.
No.
Or is that the other way around, go down? Well, it's not good news.
So that is the bulk of the state allotment. The current expense is an additional $122,285. The $100,000 is for VIP and that was the grant that Ms. Clifton talked to the board about last month, about the hospitalization for the VIP and bonuses for that group. And $22,285 is that, is donations that Ms. Love's received for the robotics and STEM program. Federal allotments is basically just sure enough, based on the planning allotments and the actual allotments at the beginning of the year. The only new, there's a new PRC 191 in that and it's for Missing Children Grant of $20,879. And then there was an additional allotment of $125,795 in PRC 203, which was another bonus that was issued by the state. That was the premium pay bonus that was given out also in January. So that's adding that to our federal allotment. And the last one is capital outlay and we are adding the $79,000 that the county agreed to carry over from last year. And that was HVAC funds that we didn't receive the equipment and stuff in time to pay for it at the end of the year and they agreed to carry that over. And we have since spent that on other HVAC issues that have been repaired.
Good deal. Any questions, board members? Here now, I would entertain a motion that we approve, the budget amendments as presented.
Motion approved.
Motion do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion second, any other discussion? Here now, all in favor, say my saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Board of Education, nothing, Dr. Baldwin, superintendent information.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At our past two meetings, we've recognized athletic accomplishments of our student athletes and those athletic accomplishments have brought together our community and helped us all to recover from the past two years of the pandemic. And I'd just like to point out that this afternoon, we were able to visit Union Academy at their Badger Bash where they had showcased project-based learning. And it was certainly refreshing and gave me, and I hope gave what we were able to attend, a sense of hope for the future as we, as we continue to recover from the pandemic. And then obviously, South Macon's chorus tonight. We're not where we were pre-pandemic, but it's obvious from what I've seen today from our students and our staff that we are on the road to recovery. I'm really grateful for that. In your packets, you also have the coming events. Wednesday, May the 4th, is the Special Olympics, it will be held at Macon Middle School at 9:00 a.m. Saturday, May the 7th, Macon County Academic Foundation Auction, at South Macon Elementary School at 10:00 a.m. Monday, May the 9th, is the beginning of Teacher Appreciation Week. Wednesday, May the 11th, is Franklin High School Class Day at 10:00 a.m. in the gymnasium. Saturday, May the 21st, is Highlands' graduation, it's at 10:00 a.m. Monday, May the 23rd, is our May board meeting at Nantahala School at 6:00 p.m. Also in your packet are the graduating. Also in your packet are the graduation dates for, uh, 2022. Franklin High School, Saturday, June 4th at 9:00 AM on the Franklin High School Football Field. Nantahala School is Friday, June 3rd, 6:00 PM at the gymnasium with the senior reception beginning at 5:00. Highlands School, Saturday, May the 21st at 10:00 AM. And it will be in the gymnasium or outdoors. Mackin Elementary College will be Sunday, June 5th at 2:30 at Smoky Mountain Center for Performing Arts. And then Union Academy will be Friday, May the 27th at 6:00 PM at Turner's Church of God.
Very good. Anything else, Dr. Baldwin?
Yes, sir.
All board members, at this time, we are going to a closed session. I'll turn to, uh, Mr. Hane, if you would, please.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Close session is one set up in GS 143-1811. Advancing disclosure, privilege or confidential personnel information pursuant to GS 115C-18321 and student matters pursuant to GS 115C-42 and 20 USC 1232G referred up, as well as 143-181A3 to consult with attorney employed or retained by the fellow body in order to preserve the attorney client privilege.
You heard the, uh, reason, board members, entertain a motion, go to closed session at this time.
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor, say my saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. I don't expect it to take real long and also don't expect any air taken now. So Renee will always get that out since it's a party to meet for tomorrow, by tomorrow. So, all board members, we will move across the hall.